I would like to call this session of the Bridgewater Town Council meeting to order. Can we all please rise and join in a pledge of allegiance?
In my allegiance, this is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. And just want to announce that the meeting tonight is being livestreamed on YouTube. This link can be found on the Town of Bridgewater Facebook page. And I believe we have all the bugs and kinkers out, and hopefully, everything gets streamed from beginning to end tonight. Uh, let's see. All right. We'll start off with approvals of minutes from previous meetings. And we do have all councilors present at all those meetings. So on the June 18th, 2024, meeting minutes, do I have a voice, uh, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
A second. Mr. Chase with a motion, and Ms. Robinson, second. All those in favor of the... Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we do have to do a roll call because we do not have them present.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Delver?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Daines?
Yes.
Ms. Strigl?
Yes.
And Ms. Robinson? Yes. The nine in favor are a vote.
Thank you. Next, we have the meeting minutes from the July 16th, 2024, meeting. Again, do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Strigl's with a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Robinson. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, again, we will move with a voice vote for the approval.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Strigl?
Yes.
Ms. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Burmanford?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
And Ms. McKinnon?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. And finally, we have the minutes from the July 23rd, 2024, meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Strigl's with a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Chase. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move forward with a roll call vote, please.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Delver?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Daines?
Yes.
Ms. Strigl?
Yes.
And Ms. McGraw?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to announcements from the president. First, just want to mention that our Veterans Agents Greg Martin is on vacation this week, so we're not quite sure if we've received any word on any veterans' deaths in town. But I certainly would like to take a moment of silence to honor all those veterans that have passed in recent months that the town has lost. So please, can I have a moment of silence? Thank you. All right. And addition, just have a little summary, if you will, that I'd like to introduce in my announcements, just to kind of get some information out there. Before we get into, obviously, citizens' open forum, I'd like to make a few comments on where we stand as a council on the process of finding an acting interim town manager and a permanent town manager. First, as president of the council, it is my charge to lead this council in this process. I've attempted to have council discussions and create action steps to start this process. However, it was misconstrued early on that I was attempting to dictate or predetermined the process, which I was not, only to give ideas on a process and review what was done in the past with Mr. Dutton's hiring. In regards to naming an interim town manager, again, as president of the council, I was attempting to lead a discussion on the possibility of using the resource that we have, our interim assistant town manager, who is a retired former town manager with 30 years of municipal experience and over 12 years of being a town manager or a town administrator. To steer the ship, that is Bridgewater until we can find a permanent replacement. However, some councilors and members of the public have concerns that this would not be in the best interests of the town, and would like to see the interim position open to a greater number of candidates. In regards to the preliminary screening ad hoc committee, at our last meeting, I suggested and asked for a motion for a five-member committee made up of four town council members and a Bridgewater member of the school committee, which those appointments are up for ratification tonight. We had a discussion as a council, and other ideas were shared, but in the end, we voted as a council on a five-member committee. I've had some emails from the public asking why only five, and why not add public members, department heads, and police and fire chiefs. As I mentioned before, and included in email responses to citizens, and after asking this very question to a few different attorneys, this would create a conflict of interest for our department heads and public safety chiefs as a answer to the town manager. What other businesses or organizations do subordinates hire their boss? This ad hoc committee is different from other ad hoc committees that have been set up by the town manager with public involvement, the master plan committee, for example, due to the fact it involves in hiring of a town manager, and that task is the purview of the town council only. Section 41 of the charter states, "The town council shall appoint by a majority vote of a full council, a town manager." This is why when Mr. Dutton was hired, the town council used an ad hoc committee of four town council members only. I put forth adding a fifth member, a Bridgewater member of the BR School Committee, as it would give an odd number to the committee when it comes to a vote, puts an elected public member that does have indemnification and also represents 55% of our town budget. But again, it keeps mostly town council members. The town manager put forth BR School Committee Chair Tim Fitzgibbons, and if ratified, will put someone on this ad hoc committee that was a former town council member and went through this process before, giving the ad hoc committee his prior experience and expertise to guide it. Additionally, in this form of government, the members of the town council represent the citizens, and the voice of the citizens is shared through the town council that is elected by the people. This is why the town manager reports to the town council and everyone else reports to the town manager, and also why the town council can hire and/or fire for cause a town manager. This is the checks and balances of the town council, town manager, form of government. This is not a select board with town meeting, hiring a town administrator. It's a different process. The people of Bridgewater will have their voices heard when we bring in an outside firm, and when at least one to two public sessions will be held to get the feedback of the people relative to their wants in a new town manager. And the members of the town council will hear that input as well. Actually, I feel this would be a better process, as we will be able to hear more opinions, feedback, and input from multiple citizens this way versus putting two or three private citizens on a screening committee alone. The interviewing of the top candidates will be in a public forum, but done by members of the town council, not the public. The hire of a new town manager is made by the entire town council, whom the people have entrusted to make the decision according to the town charter. If any private citizens want to have more of a say in the hiring of a town manager or just be more in the process via an ad hoc committee, please put your name on a ballot and join us on the town council. But that is not my decision as president of this council. That is outlined in our town charter, and that is how our town government works. Again, as president, I want this process to be as transparent and as smooth as possible. But unfortunately, the guide that the town council has in this process does not exist in the charter or admin code, whether hiring an active, acting interim or permanent town manager. Therefore, as a council, we will be working to put together an ordinance led by council vice president that will outline what we are looking for in a town manager, their qualities and background, education and credentials, how we will find the candidates, and how we will review the candidates, everything necessary for the council to perform their duties in this regard, now and in the future, and then add it to the admin code. So there will not be any confusion by future councils on procedure that may have to go through this again. However, this process will definitely take some time and will not allow us to put an interim town manager in place before Mr. Dutton leaves on September 4th. If all goes well with this ordinance, after council discussion, reviewed by rules and procedures, additions and subtractions by the council members, a public hearing and advertising, we will be able to place an interim town manager by council decision by late October, early November. In the meantime, Mr. Dutton will place our interim assistant town manager, Blythe Robinson, in his role when he leaves until an interim town manager is named, which could still be Ms. Robinson or any other candidate who submits their name in for this position. That is where we stand as of tonight. We will shortly look, we will shortly look to ratify the members of the preliminary screening ad hoc committee later in the agenda. I look forward to my fellow town council members, as well as the public, and ask for your continued support as your council president, as I work selflessly and without agenda to guide us all through this process. Thank you for those moments to bring that up. Now, moving forward, we do not have any proclamations, so I will go ahead and open it up to citizens' open forum. Again, due to Massachusetts Open Town Meeting law requirements, discussions will not take place during the public comment periods. If appropriate, responses to questions, concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Please come up, state your name and address, and please limit your remarks to three minutes. Mr. Wood, you are up first.
I think it's on, it just doesn't work. I mean, it just doesn't show.
It's not lining up?
Yeah, it's because we have an extra one because Brad's not here.
Take Brad's, yeah.
All right. I'll be brief, so the... I'm sure that most of you checked your email, and I have delivered the town council handbook that I promised. Although one feedback said it was too long to read, I hope it's not. As I kept to the outline, it has suggested readings, and then some other sections on budget process and et cetera. What I'm hoping at this stage is that you'll give me some feedback if you see anything you want to add or subtract, and then we will call it a final deal, and then maybe we can get it published on the web, and others can use it as they see fit. It also gives any people interested in running for council an idea about some of the processes that are on there. I did, I do have one edit I have to make, because I've noticed that on tonight's agenda, you're changing the town council rules, and so you're referencing the town code, and I had forgotten that's in there, because if you go to the town website, the rules and procedures for the town council are actually a separate document. And so I think some correction needs to be there, or you're going to have two documents that are out of sync and confuse people. So you need one document. I would have suggested keeping it separate. It's in the code, you can keep there. I'm going to also suggest that at some point, the code becomes more versatile. We had talked at one point about introducing e-code as a system to the town, so that, like last week, you're not looking for a page number of where something is, you just simply cite the link and off you go. The last piece is, Councilor Lindy brought up an item a couple weeks ago where he said, "Your meeting now at 7:00 p.m., but the council rules say 7:30." And the rules were set up early on for 7:30, because there were several of us on the council who were working in Boston, or in my case, Quincy, but had a real challenge with the traffic to make it out here and be able to, you know, without rushing into the room, you know, it was really tight on timeframe. So we made it 7:30. We didn't think the meetings would go till 1:00 or 2:00 a.m., but sometimes they did. But you either need to adjust the rules, and you could do it tonight with amendment, to say 7:00, or you should go back to the 7:30. Again, if you, I say, go back to the 7:30, because you can attract people that work great distances but still won't participate in the government. Anyway, thank you so much, and I look forward to hearing your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Anybody else like to come up?
Mr. Ray Jamien.
Ray Jamien, Aldridge Road. I'm speaking to you tonight as the chair of the tree committee. On the agenda today is the changes to the admin code, and I would like to speak regarding the tree committee's structure. When the tree committee was set up, the, Mr. Dutton wisely put a place on the tree committee for an arborist, a certified arborist, or somebody that have the qualifications. We don't have one on the tree committee, and that's partly due to the fact, and mainly due to the fact, that we require that committees be made up of town residents. And I've talked to the town manager about this, and he has put into the admin code, the proposed code that you have in front of you, for the tree committee, that if we cannot find a arborist that is a resident of Town of Bridgewater, we can go outside the town to get an arborist. We have a university sitting next to us, and we should use it. So I, all I'm saying is, I would like you to consider approving the recommendations in the admin code for the tree committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Anybody else? Sam?
Sam Baumgartner, 60 Short Street. I want to start with my first reminder that these microphones work best when they are right here. So if you're sitting like this, it doesn't work. Dr. Perry and I did not converse before this meeting, but you see this? You answered all my questions. Thank you for that introduction.
Thank you, Sam. Anybody else? Come on up.
How you doing? Gary Murray's Village Gate Drive, and I have a bunch of petitions here to expand the size of the search committee, Mr. Chairman. These were done in only about a half hour. We could have got probably 1,000 to bring a little bit more experience to the, to the committee you have, the committee of five, which is a handful of councilors and school committeemen, according to what I've read about it. I noticed Mrs. Ellenberg, Adeline was not put on the committee. I wonder why. It would have been nice that we've had her on the committee to have that other viewpoint. So these here were done in such a short time. People know what the new town manager, what he's going to be up against. We've got a undertaking coming with this downtown project, this high, and I call it , well, for what it is, it's a high-density housing project, and it's going to change the town forever. Do I want to see the town cleaned up? Absolutely. But I don't want to see it done at the sec because of what the state mandates, or what some builders, once they get in, once they start determining what we should and shouldn't do. Once you let them in, and I worked construction a lot of my life, and I've seen it from the residential end, once they're in, they own you. Once the land's cleared, and once these things are going, especially big projects like this, I mean, the scale is incredible. You're talking 1,400 units, and I told people, "Go stand in front of the Axis Development down there. Just take 300 and plant them downtown and see how that changes the scale of it all." It's unbelievable. So this is what's, it's woken, awoken a lot of people about the next town manager, because it's, it's a big deal. Otherwise, I wouldn't even be here, but this is that big. We'd like to see it expanded to about eight or nine people, and people with diverse backgrounds, CEOs, people who run companies, project managers. We could put it out on a website and see if we get a few of these people in that are just citizens, maybe retired police chiefs. I know one down our way, because I know you can't have anybody that's paid to be on this particular committee, fire chiefs, highway department, just to get a different perspective on this committee. We want things out in the open. We want it to be transparent, number one. We want the search committee to be filled with people that are impartial and don't have any personal interest or conflict of interest, and I know you'll probably do that. The search committee should be made up of citizens, once again, with diverse experience and expertise. A CEO of a company or project manager is going to ask questions. There are a lot of councilors here, and I know they do a great job, and not, they're not going to be able to fire those questions at a potential candidate. They just come from a different background.
Five seconds left.
The search committee must engage with the MMA, the Mass Municipal Association, and you probably, I hope you're doing that. The search committee must hire a professional search company, such as UMass Collins Group, which can help the town with advertising. And please consider the council's prior vote, which is to have just the five people and expand it maybe by three or four people, so we get a broad, diverse group of people that are interviewing for this position tonight.
All right, that's, we're low over the limit right now. We're over three minutes, so can you just wrap up your comments, please?
I'm almost done. We just would like to have a vote and vote on the record tonight, the people who would go along with this. The council is here. If you would take a vote at some time, either now or coming up, about what I've just read here, to expand the size of the, of the committee that's going to be searching for, you know, the town, new town manager. It is a big deal. It really is. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for your comments.
I don't know if you want these petitions, but I have them if you want them.
I'd like to see them.
Anybody else like to come up?
Can we see them?
Good evening. At Ivaldi Boxwood Lane. It was a week ago that an email was sent to all of you from Carlton Hunt, who's not here tonight, unfortunately, with information on the city of Cambridge and the process that they used to select a new city manager. Did you all get it, and did you all have a chance to read it? Although Cambridge is much larger than Bridgewater with over 100,000 people, it does have a council manager form of government with a nine-member city council. They also have an elected mayor. Back in 2022, their city manager announced his retirement, which thus started their search process. He appointed one of their department heads as an interim and formed a 19-member screening committee consisting of four councilors and 15 representatives from the, from community organizations and local residents, reflecting a citywide perspective. They had over 100 people submit applications willing to give their time in support of the search efforts. They also hired a search firm to help with facilitating the process. This 19-member screening committee reflected a diverse cross-section of citizens, business owners, and civic organizations. Their role was to screen, interview, and recommend a short list of finalists to the city council for their nominating vote at the end of the process. As you have already heard tonight, the people of Bridgewater want a voice in this process. Cambridge did just that. They gave their citizens a voice, which improved the overall quality of their effort. If I'm correct, the majority of you are still working full-time, which could impact the time needed for you to properly engage and support this process. There are many people in Bridgewater who are retired or work part-time who can invest the time needed to make the required commitment of this search effort. The city of Cambridge listened to its residents and stakeholders. In preparing their city manager search profile, they undertook a six-week community engagement process composed of town hall-style meetings, online feedback gathering, citizen surveys, and internal and external stakeholder conversations. They ended up with over 4,000 unique pieces of feedback from residents and employees. As the city of Cambridge listened to its residents, we, the people of Bridgewater, ask and expect you to do the same. By rescinding the vote that you made last week on the initial structure of the search committee and developing a new structure somewhat like Cambridge that ensures diversity across residents of Bridgewater and engages us in the process of having a voice in the town manager's selection and decision-making process. I'd like to end with a question. I believe it was mentioned recently by the town attorney that citizens could not serve on a search committee and be guaranteed coverage under the town's insurance policy. If this is true, then how did Cambridge have 15 citizens on their search committee? Has anyone confirmed this with our talent insurance company? If this is true, couldn't a rider be added to the insurance coverage to cover any citizens? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ivaldi.
Point of information?
We're still in the middle of, of citizens' open forum. Anybody else like to come up? Mrs. Hanson?
This seems taller. It's taller. Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. I thank Mr. Perry, Dr. Perry, for what you had said. It cleared up some concerns I had, not necessarily all. But one thing I will write on, Mr. Ivaldi, which I put in my long letter to you guys, about the insurance, I too has questioned, has anybody actually talked to the insurance company or looked at the policy to see, in fact, if we're not, citizens can't be covered? And then I'm wondering, why, why are they not be able to cover on something like this, but we can volunteer for other things? You know, what's the difference? That I would like to have explained, but I would like to know, has anybody actually spoken to the insurance company? Because it's a speculation, and either way, I mean, if it's, if it's not covered, it's not covered, but we should make sure we know for sure. But the only other thing I noticed, and I have a comment, is I don't know who decided on who's going to be the four town council members, but I do feel it's slighted. It seems one-sided, and nothing against who's on here, but it seems like it's always the same councilors that are on committees of such importance like this, and not that none of them are not important, but you know what I mean. I would like to see a couple others, and Mark Lindy, I would support Mark Lindy. Again, not to say anything against anybody else who's on here, but I feel it's very one-sided, and I don't think it's as diverse as it should be. I would like to see more, but I would say Mark Lindy would be, if I only could do one more, Mark Lindy. And that's all I have for comments right now, and I'd like answers to those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Go on once, go on twice.
Point of information?
Yes, Ms. Allenberg?
Yes, since we've concluded with the citizens' comments, I would like, at this time, to make a motion to rescind the previous committee that was adopted last meeting. And I'm doing this under Robert's Rules of Order, section 35, and so I put forth a motion to rescind the prior committee. Hope someone will second it.
I'll second for discussion.
Second for discussion. Mr. Rollins, any advice on this situation?
I believe section 2-7 of your charter says, first and foremost, no measures shall be passed finally on the date in which it's introduced. Secondly, I, I do not believe that there's actually a pending measure relative to this that has actually been brought forth to the council. There are rules under your charter that essentially say every matter coming before the town council for action shall be put to a vote, the result of which shall be duly recorded, and then down below, section 2-7 addresses measures, which basically talk about the notice process for which you have to follow under the charter. So...
Yes.
I, I believe that you could, and it also in the charter says that you don't rescind ordinances, you make ordinances that can override prior ordinances. So it would be by way of ordinance or order. I'm assuming, based on the vote at the last council meeting, you, you did not have a measure before you. So you made a vote on the construction of the ad hoc committee, not by way of either resolution, order, or ordinance, which is problematic within itself, frankly, and I think I discussed that at the last meeting.
So maybe it's not valid, then, if we didn't do an ordinance or anything?
Well, I think you took a vote, and you, under your charter, it says every matter coming before the town council for action shall be put to a vote. But I, but I do believe, based on the technicalities of it, as I said last time, there was no measure technically pending before this council.
So we have a clean slate?
I, I think if you bring an ordinance, if you bring an ordinance, there can be a vote on that ordinance. I think under your rules, that's what it says.
Maybe I'll write one up right now.
Well, you have, there's a notice procedure for an ordinance.
Yes, as a matter of fact, I checked into that with the Attorney General, and there is something which is known as a series. And if the same matter is continuing from meeting to meeting to meeting, and it is the same substance, then it is covered under the first notice law.
That, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the notice under our charter for ordinances. Has nothing to do with the Attorney General. That's, are you talking about...
You're referring to posting of meetings, posting of meetings.
Right. I'm talking about following the charter relative to how you post ordinances and notice the public on ordinances. If you want to do this by way of an ordinance, then you absolutely can do that. I believe what was said at the beginning, under the president's comments, was they're proposing an ordinance at the, at the next meeting. I think that's what I heard said.
Right. This is the, you know, the...
So there's nothing that prevents you from doing that, certainly.
So then the question, it would be which version of the ordinance we would be adopting at the next meeting, perhaps?
Confused.
Would that not be a separate ordinance?
Yeah, it'd be a separate ordinance. You can bring in, you can draft legislation, propose an ordinance, and go through your formal process.
Yes. And Mr. Perry is bringing an ordinance. Is that not true?
I have no idea what they're doing. I mean, that's a, you'd have to talk to your fellow councilors.
The council vice president is working on an ordinance to bring forth at the next meeting on the procedure of hiring an interim or permanent town manager.
Does that ordinance include the five members stated here on the agenda?
Based on what we voted at the last meeting, yes.
Okay, so then you say that vote does hold. I am making a motion to rescind... I am making a motion to rescind the vote that took place.
Then, well, and did I get a
So you, you would do it by way of an, an ordinance or an order? The formal way to do it is by way of measure?
Well, we didn't do it the formal way the first way. We didn't do anything, did we, except take a vote?
I entirely agree with you.
Okay.
Well, that's fine.
So then we've got a clean slate, then, really?
I, I think you need to bring a measure. I said this at the last meeting. You all were debating something that wasn't in any form that was a measure. I, I personally believe that. That's what I said at the last meeting.
So then we will have
Hold on a second. Let me have a question.
Excuse me.
So on that advice, would you, do we take a vote or do we not take a vote?
No, I think you have to bring it in a formal measure. I think this body has been having discussions. There was a vote taken as the byproduct of a posted discussion. Clearly, there's an objection to the vote that was taken as a byproduct of a discussion. The proper way to legislate these issues is by way of ordinance. And I think and/or order, resolution probably doesn't serve you very well here. The, the only mechanism that doesn't really require that, that we vote on typically are appointments. So this was a little bit outside of the box of what an appointment is, and it was more under the guise of this is the composition. So you, could you make an argument technically that it was under appointments? Maybe. Should it be in writing in the form of an order? Yes. Because measures that come before this body should be always in the form of a resolution, an order, or an ordinance unless there's some emergency for doing it and/or unless it is an appointment. So I, I personally agree that it should be in the form of a written order or ordinance.
So we cannot do this today, then?
Your ordinance or order, your proposed
Any order, any ordinance. Because what Mr. Murphy has drawn up is not in writing either at this point. Is that correct?
I, I don't think that's
It's not on the agenda to speak of this evening.
I, I don't think you're wrong. I, I don't think Ms. Allenberg's wrong about that.
All right. As far as proceeding, then.
I, I think that the proper mechanism is by way of order or ordinance, and I, and I think that's, Mr. Murphy is drafting that for this very reason. So I think your process, I, I think what happened, and you all are the ones that steer the ship, was you were probably thinking you wanted to do this quickly, but the process is not quick. So the process has to be formal unless you all agree to suspend the rules in some fashion and take a vote, which I did not hear a suspension of the rules. I did hear a vote taken, and I think that there should be formal orders or ordinances that spell this stuff out. I think it's going to bring a lot more transparency, and it may relieve some of the concerns that you're all getting.
May I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Robinson.
Mr. President, this is a question for yourself as well as for the town manager and the town attorney. When you all, and Vice President Murphy, when you all met prior to at least, you know, understand the previous process and the notes that you had brought, and I understand Mr. Fitzgibbons is a part of that, were you advised at that point that there needed to be a written order?
Uh, I don't
Did you advise in that meeting?
Well, I'm not going to give attorney-client privileges.
Oh, boy.
I, I can't. That's completely unethical.
Okay, that's fine.
I, I can't tell you what my clients
Okay, that is fine.
My clients can tell you whatever, but
I think, so can I, can I finish? Can I finish?
Quiet in this audience, please, or we'll call a recess and clear the room, please.
I think you, you should ask them, and they can probably speak for themselves about how they envision the process. It's not my process.
Okay, so, and, and I think it's fair to say, so this is advice and counsel. We typically like to follow it.
Yeah, no, we were going through prior process of what the town did prior to. I'm answering Mrs. Robinson's question, Mrs. Allenberg. We went through just a review of what the process was the last time Mr. Dutton was hired and went with that as a start, as a start of a discussion. That's why it wasn't put forth in a
Gotcha.
Form of an order.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Two, two questions, one for the attorney and then through you to the town coun, to the town attorney. Who are the, who are the clients? Is the
The town of Bridgewater.
But the town of Bridgewater?
The town
The town council?
The town council, the town manager.
Right.
The employees of the town.
Okay.
Not the public.
Right. And the other question I have is the petitions were delivered to our council clerk. I think Council Robinson asked to see them, and I would also like to see them.
Yeah, we can make arrangements.
Wait, I'm sorry, what did I ask for?
Not after the, the petitions. Didn't you say you wanted to see them?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
I think we should be able to see them during this meeting.
I'll scan them and send them to you.
No, during the meeting.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from any council members?
One more
Ms. Allenberg.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask Mr. Murphy if you would be willing to work with citizens, department heads, et cetera, et cetera, in the drafting of the ordinance so we could find something unifying to all go under
Ms. Allenberg, the function of writing an ordinance is a function of a town council member. I mean, he can certainly get input from, from, from the public and whatever he wants to write up, just like any counselor can, but it's, it's up to an individual counselor to write up their potential ordinance.
I'm asking him what his intentions are.
To answer your question, yes.
Thank you.
Willing to work with them.
Thank you.
And, and just a question as well.
Mr. Lindy.
So the process will be, Mr. Murphy writes the ordinance, it goes to rules and procedures first, they discuss it, and then it comes back with a recommendation, one way or the other, to this council.
Who's on rules and procedures?
Fred's the chair.
Brad and
And myself.
And Paul.
Ah.
Was there a question?
That's it. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, based on that information, I guess then, you know, to incorporate what we were looking to do in the upcoming ordinance that would outline the procedure, then we'd have to backtrack and rewrite up an order to put on paper what we're looking for on the ad hoc committee, and we'll bring it back to a vote at our next meeting. We may have one version, we might have two versions, we'll see what, what comes forth. But we'll go through the proper process and, and bring it forth at the next council meeting. Ms. Strigels.
Thank you. I am just curious, based on some of our resident feedback and feedback from counselors, is our insurance policy something as town counselors we are allowed to see? I don't know who I need to ask about that, but I just figured it was worth putting it on the record to ask.
No, certainly, that's publicly accessible. Yep.
So I think that that would be a helpful way of gaining some transparency for all of us to be able to see that and know one way or the other whether or not it's possible to have citizens on the ad hoc committee. I think that would get us over the hump if we had that language.
Maybe we should also clarify what that discussion was, because that's more nuanced than are they covered by insurance or not? The discussion was about citizens acting on their own accord and saying things in an interview context or an employment context. So you have to be specific about that question. It's in this context which we're talking about, not whether or not citizens are covered if they're on the zoning board of appeals or if they're volunteering in some other capacity. So that's a much more nuanced question than what the policy says, just so you know that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that any residents that haven't heard that language
Of course.
Have gotten it from you.
Yep.
We have some new faces tonight, so.
Of course.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Strigels.
Through you to the town attorney. So not asking about the insurance, asking about citizens being involved in the committee. I called the Mass Municipal Association today. The person that I spoke to actually served on a citizens' committee in their town as just a citizen, not through their role at the MMA. So I guess my question is, having looked at other documents from other towns that I forwarded to Council Murphy, who's drafting the ordinance, a citizen can serve on a search committee?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just want to
That, that wasn't the point of that conversation about liability insurance.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah, of course a citizen can serve on a committee.
And let the minutes reflect our attorney's
Ms. Allenberg, you weren't recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Would you like to make a comment?
Yes, my comment is, let's have it in the record what the attorney said about volunteers. Thank you.
Everything is in the record for tonight's meeting.
Citizens can volunteer.
Ms. McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the town lawyer. So we're going to have a resident who's on the school committee on the ad hoc. What insurance does he have?
Not sure.
Were you saying that you didn't want to have residents on the ad hoc because they're not
I didn't say I didn't want to have anything.
Well, you cautioned, you cautioned them.
I, let me, let me, let me be very clear about
Okay.
My role here is to help you, okay? My role here is to advise you of if someone serves on a committee and they're interviewing someone, they could expose themselves. It has nothing to do with the council. I'm not worried about you all being covered.
Right.
All right? So I don't know why your search is turning into questions to me about liability insurance, honestly. I, I don't know why that's in order for where we're at in this process.
I could explain that, because when we were talking about having more residents on it, you said that if we did something, the council was covered by the town liability insurance. But residents weren't.
No, I said, I said if they speak in a certain context
Right.
Individually, outside of certain, you can't go through every hypothetical in an employment interview.
Right.
But they may not be covered. It was a, it was a heeding of advice to citizens who would do it. It was, had nothing to do with you guys. So if, if maybe that was articulated in a way
No, it wasn't about us. It was about the residents.
Right. It was, it was a, it was basically saying
The liability insurance would cover us.
Right.
But you were saying
Be careful if you're a citizen going on it, just so that
Because the liability insurance wouldn't cover them.
Depending on what they say or do.
The town.
If they did something, I, I wouldn't, I don't know every possible fact, but
Through the president?
That's a possibility.
So having that caution, then why would we have someone from the school committee on it because he's a resident, not a town council?
I don't, I'm not following your question.
That is my question.
So you were saying that you advised residents for not residents to be on, oh, say residents were on
I didn't advise to have anyone on this.
You were saying
I didn't advise to have anyone
You cautioned us, okay, you cautioned us that if we had a bigger committee and there were residents, that if they did something
Right.
They could be liable.
I agree with that.
So if we can't have a lot of residents on, why can we have a town, a resident?
I never recommended having a school committee. That's
Not you, but I mean, why would, why would we have that him, but we can't have others?
You can.
But you wouldn't caution us and say, well, you shouldn't have that residence because his, the liability
Up to him. He's a, he's just a private citizen on that.
Okay, so if we can have him without caution, then we could have a larger group. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, but I'm not telling you not, I'm not
I didn't say you were telling us.
Oh, okay.
You were cautioning us, just let us know.
I'm cautioning him.
Ms. McGrath?
Well, you were
I'm cautioning him in the same Ms. Lindy may have a follow-up question that might help you with your information.
So, so a follow-up question through you to the town attorney. If the school committee chairman is serving on this committee, is he covered like counselors are under our policy or would the Bridgewater
No, I think it's a different thing. I think he's serving as a citizen on that committee.
Okay, so would be even be our regional school district?
I don't know what their policy is. I have no idea what his, I, we don't deal, so I'm not the attorney for the regional school district.
Okay, I understand.
I have no idea what he's covered under.
Okay.
But he has the same risk as any other private citizen on that committee, right?
Mr. President?
Ms. Allenberg.
Could we direct our town manager to find the rider necessary for volunteers?
We'd cross that bridge if we, you know, put citizens on the ad hoc committee, if that's the direction that this goes in.
So you don't want to investigate that issue first?
No.
To see whether we can do citizens in addition?
I'm, I'm just saying.
But I don't, I, I, I think what's getting missed is it's, it has nothing to do with whether or not, some of these people may be covered for things that they do. It was, it was saying you're going to be in, in this board in particular, as a citizen, you would be in an employment interviewing context.
Yes, and in that context.
Right, which expands the potentiality for those volunteering for liability. That was it.
Right.
That was the whole point of that conversation. I, I, we're getting hung up on it, but
Right.
That was it.
Through you, Mr. President, can we have the town manager please investigate the rider and insurance situation for volunteers ASAP?
Okay, Mr. Dutton can look into that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Any other comments? So in that regard, then, under appointments, we will postpone those appointments until next meeting where we can have a vote on the ad hoc, and then at that point, we'll make appointments.
No, I think you, I think you should do it as a measure.
No, we'll, we'll be, yeah, the, the, yeah, we'll be developing the ad hoc as a measure. However, the, again, the, the appointments to the ad hoc would have to be done
Postponed and tell you
At a later date.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's right.
So does that get folded into what Council Murphy's doing, or can any of us
Again, it's
Suggest a measure.
Well, either that or we're just going to have to just list it as an ad hoc committee without any numbers on it. And that ad hoc committee would be determined by the order that is written.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Allenberg.
I would like to suggest that for, we have retired people serve on the committee, such as the retired highway department fellow, other retired people which can go as citizens but have the body of knowledge and expertise that we need.
Yep, that can all be discussed when we bring up potential orders at the next meeting.
I think my suggestion to you, Ms. Allenberg, would be draft that order, and then you guys can have the debate on the order. Like, whatever you propose is fine, but do it in that form.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
So again, appointments to the ad hoc committee will be postponed. That brings us to be reappointment, Board of Assessors, Milton Morris. Can I have a summary of that, Mr. Dutton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Buddy Morris has served on the Board of Assessors for a number of terms now, and he is willing to serve for another term, and I would certainly encourage the council to ratify his appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Chase, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, by Council Paul. Any further discussion?
Just a
Ms. Lindy?
Not specifically on the appointment, so I don't know if it's appropriate. I, the question I spoke to you about, could, going forward in the future, could we please have resumes included when we consider reappointments and appointments?
Yep, we can make, again, many times I know on the initial appointments, we receive a lot of the initial information. Reappointments, we typically get the same information or presented? No? Okay. So as we discussed again many times, it's the initial, but if it can be provided, we'll take it. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, we'll have to go through a roll call vote.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Strigels?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. All right, that finishes appointments. We do not have any hearings this evening or license transactions or presentations. Does the town manager have a report he would like to give tonight?
I have nothing tonight, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. No further discussions are listed. Does any committees have any reports that they'd like to share this evening? Seeing none. We do not have any legislation for action or old business this evening, but we do have a few items under new business. Order FY 25-007, an order dedicating 46 to 48 Summer Street as a public park pursuant to MGL Chapter 45, Section 3. I will, this is sponsored myself, but I will ask Mr. Dutton for a quick summary.
Thank you, Mr. President. This order is somewhat pro forma. As you recall, the council took by eminent domain the property alternately known as 46 48 Summer Street or the old mobile station. Did that in February of 2023, and pursuant to a grant application that we have right now submitted with the state, one of the criteria is that the council officially designate that as park property under Mass General Law Chapter 45, Section 3. That is what this order does, and that's about it. So I encourage you to refer it and vote on it hopefully at your next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton.
Question?
Yes, Ms. Allenberg?
How much was the grant for?
The grant application we submitted was for $500,000.
Will that cover the cost of the project? How much is the project going to cost in general?
Right now, the project is estimated to cost 760, and we have, if we get the grant, that would be 500 of it. We've got some confirmation from Bridgewater State that they're willing to contribute a portion of the capital cost, and then either the capital stabilization fund as part of your capital program or additional CPC funds hopefully would cover the balance.
Any idea how much Bridgewater State University would be contributing?
It's not committed in writing yet, so I don't want to say it publicly, but I'm happy to talk offline.
At this point, would you say that it is going to happen?
I can never predict what the state's going to do. We had a very, a great site meeting today with state representatives, so I'm optimistic that they like the project and they want to see it done, but we won't know about that until fall sometime.
When do we find out about the grant, the $500,000?
Fall.
In the fall?
Fall.
I see. When in the fall?
They're not specific. Generally, it's mid to late September, sometimes at the announcement stretch into October.
I see. That is all, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allenberg. I would like to get a motion to refer this to Community Economic Development Committee.
I move.
Thank you, Ms. Strigels, and a second?
Second.
Mr. Chase? Any further, Mr. Lindy?
Since it's monetary, does it also go to budget and finance?
Mr. Dutton?
I don't think there's any financial impact here. You can send it wherever you think is best to send it, but there's really no financial impact.
It's just a question.
Yeah, more of just that, not so much the financial, it's just the taking of the property by eminent domain, so. So with that, any further questions? With that, I need a roll call vote for sending it to Community Economic Development.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Strigels?
Yes.
And Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Next, proposed ordinance D-FY 25-002, revisions of the admin code. Again, in working with the town manager, we, I put my name on this to introduce it to the council, but I'll refer to the town manager to give a brief overview.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is fairly straightforward. I think I've mentioned to the council for probably almost the last year that collecting potential revisions to the admin code, that's what is presented here. Are these the only revisions that the council may want to do? No, there may be more, but for the most part, this corrects, either corrects some inconsistencies between revisions to the charter that have been made that need to be reflected in the admin code, or just various boards and committees trying to streamline their operations. You heard from Mr. Ajimian earlier, who is Chair of the Tree Committee, and was hopeful that there could be some revisions to the board makeup there. So that's reflected in many of these. So most of it is focused on revamping some of the board and committee charges, but I would encourage you to refer it, and I would encourage the counselors to review the admin code. If there are other changes that the counselors feel need to be made, then those can come up in, as amendments to what is done here. So it's for your consumption, but it's either my advice or reflection of what the committees have requested over the last number of months.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton.
Quick question?
Yes, Ms. Lindy?
Through you, Mr. Dutton. If the library board wanted to make revisions to that code, that would be the time to suggest it, correct?
Yep, absolutely, absolutely.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Allenberg?
Thank you. I personally would like to see each and every revision in writing before I vote on it.
No, we're not voting, well, we're just sending it to committee at this point in time. We're not voting on it as well. We're just referring it to a subcommittee.
Okay, you're sending it to committee, and which committee are you sending it to?
It's going to be referred to Rules and Procedures if I can get a motion to do so.
I see.
I'll make the motion to refer it to Rules and Procedures.
Thank you, Dutton, a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Robinson, any further discussion?
If I could just clarify, that in your packet is, are all the proposed revisions, so they are in the packet.
Yeah, everything in the packet is what's been proposed as far as-
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Robinson?
I just do have a clarifying question. Section 1, Item D, offices and standards, term of office.
Okay.
It reads, "The term of office of all elective, all elective town officers shall be three years, beginning on the second Monday following the election and continuing until their successors are qualified." And then the proposed amendment is, "Except that the term of office for counselors shall begin on the next business day following the election."
Okay.
Forgive the ignorant question, what is a town officer that's not an elected member of the council?
Mr. Dutton, if you-
Library trustees, the town clerk, and the school board.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we had our first and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, can I get a roll call vote?
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Strigels?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. And finally, petition P-2025-001, state primary warrant for 2024. Mr. Dutton, if you wouldn't mind just reviewing this for the council.
This is the state primary warrant for 2024.
Thank you so much. Again, this is being just held at a council level, and I just need a motion to approve for a-
Motion to approve.
Oh, Ms. Robinson, motion to approve. Do I have a second? Ms. Strigels, any further questions from any council members? Seeing none, can I have a roll call vote to keep it at the council level?
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Strigels?
Yes.
And Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. So that concludes our new business for this evening. And that brings us right back to citizens' comments. And again, in regards to citizens' comments, there's my cover. Here we go. So due to Mass Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during the public comment period. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Would any citizens like to come up and speak here at the end of the meeting? Remember to keep it at three minutes.
Sam Baumgartner, still 60 Short Street. I just want to, I guess, support Mr. Ivaldi's statement earlier about the importance of diversity in this development of an ad hoc committee, and it appears to be the tenor of the folks who are showing up here, that that's what they're looking for. And, you know, we have, supposedly have a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee in town, which has never actually met, but I think this is a prime opportunity to make a statement about diversity and inclusion, and somehow in your ordinance, perhaps you can include language that this ad hoc committee will include diversity in terms of age, racial makeup, gender, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. Anybody else like to come up?
Yep, and Ivaldi, Boxwood Lane. So although tonight's meeting was a little chaotic at times, there's a sense, at least I have a sense of relief that we're sort of doing another reset now, and I think we have an opportunity maybe to sort of look at this through a different set of lenses based on the feedback that you guys have been given. So just to let you know, we all appreciate everything you're doing, and it gets difficult at times, but take your time on this. This is going to be probably one of the most important decisions you ever make as a council, and we're all here for you. We're not against you. We want the best result for our town. So please listen to the citizens, please. Everybody that's spoken tonight, from the depths of their hearts, wants the best for our town. And the last thing, I think two or three meetings ago, I asked for an update on revenue generated from retail marijuana sales, and we still haven't heard anything back on that. So if somebody could take a note of that for the next meeting, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ivaldi. Mr. Wood?
Bill Wood, 388 Hayward Street. I'll just follow up on Ed's question. So now that the retail store has been open for almost a year, I think, we should understand also what the cost of the retail, cost of the town actually is. So when you're getting the revenue number, it'd be good to understand what the cost number is as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Anybody else?
Donna Joel, 50 Keith Place. We had heard at one of the last town council meetings that the survey had been completed for the property down at Summer Streets, 46 Summer Street, the old mobile station, and I haven't seen anything published on that yet, what the result of that survey, when, could anybody answer when we could anticipate that?
I'm looking at it.
I know we're moving forward with grants and things of that nature, but we ask for citizens' input on that project, and I know that question was asked at a couple, maybe two or three meetings ago, and I still haven't heard the answer. And then I would like to just add one other comment. I know that in my emails or conversations with some of the town council members, we've placed a lot of burden on your time, and I really appreciate the time that everybody gave, whether in person or on a phone call or in an email, to get back, and I do appreciate that. And then I know that I also made some comments that I felt that the interim town manager should be a full-time position, and by no means is that any reference or suggestion that Ms. Robinson is not capable. I did not want that to be assumed that that was part of my comment, and while she's here, I wanted to say that. My only comment is about the hours being limited to part-time, but I think we need a full-time interim town manager. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go on once, go on twice. All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming up and speaking. All right, so we will move on to council comments, and I'll start with Mr. McKinnon, if you'd like to speak on his remote location.
No comments for me, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. McKinnon. Ms. Robinson?
No comments for me, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Ms. Allenberg?
Yes, through you, Mr. President, I have a few questions. I would like to know, has the MMA, the Mass Municipal Association, been contacted?
This isn't a time for questions, Allenberg, just council comments, whatever comments you want to make.
Well, my question was my comment, okay? And I would like to know yes or no on that, if the MMA has been contacted. And I have heard, this is another comment, that a search committee has been selected, a professional search committee already selected?
No one's been selected yet.
That's very good. Well, I, my comments in conclusion are, thank you to all the citizens who are brave enough to put your name on a petition and show up because it shows you care, and we counselors are accountable to you. So thank you to the citizens. That concludes my comments, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Allenberg. Mr. Murphy?
Nothing, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Lindy?
I'd also like to echo the comments to thank the citizens for being here. I think citizen input is critical. You've entrusted me in one district, I appreciate that, and I am listening to everything that you have to say. I'm also glad that the process is going at a slower pace. I know it's not ideal with our town manager leaving, but I believe it's one of the top five things that we need to do, and we need to do it right. So thank you to the citizens and my fellow councils.
Mr. Chase?
Nothing this evening, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Strigels?
Thank you so much. So I just also want to echo my thanks for all of the feedback that we've received, and we hear your concerns, and I hope that us revisiting this as an ordinance will gain your trust and buy-in from all the citizens here and beyond. And I really want you to know that I thank you for doing exactly what we asked of you by giving us the input here. When we hear it here, it's much more powerful because it goes a lot further than when we hear chatter online or when it's an individual conversation. So I just ask that you all continue to engage in the process, but also understand and give us grace and patience as we navigate this, and understand that we are all doing a service for the town because we love this town. So thank you for your input, and hopefully we can continue this in a positive way.
Ms. McGrath?[1746.47]